At this time, we'll call to order the regular meeting of common council. This is August 5th, 2025. Carrie, roll please.
Alder Person Carpenter.
Here.
Esther Khan.
Here.
Gantz.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Connerger.
Here.
Ledvinah.
Here.
P Rock.
Here.
Mayor Boyd.
I am here, thank you. Item two, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, approval of the minutes of the July 15th, 2025, common council meeting. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person P Rock, second by Alder Person Ledvinah. Discussion or comments? Alder Person, oh, motion by Alder Person Carpenter, second by Alder Person Ledvinah. Why did I do that?
I don't know.
Good start.
It's okay, I know.
Discussion or comments? It's those block parties tonight. Just threw me way off.
25 seconds.
Seeing we have none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item four, public comment upon matters not on the agenda. Comments made during the public comment period shall pertain only to matters under the jurisdiction of the common council. Anyone in person, it appears not, or virtually, have any public comment upon matters not on the agenda. Now is your time. For the second time, any public comment upon matters not on the agenda. Third and final time, public comment upon matters not on the agenda, now is your time. All right, let's move to item five. Green Bay Metro Transit Update. We have Patty Kiwis here from Green Bay Metro. Everyone, I think you probably remember her. She will give us a little update on Green Bay Transit. Patty?
Yes, thank you all very much for having me. I probably don't need much of a mic, I can talk. But yes, all right, so I'm just going to give a little bit of an overview, but I think everybody looks pretty familiar to me, so. Just, you know, Green Bay Metro provides public transportation to the city of Green Bay, and then, of course, to the city of Deep Pier and villages of Ashwaban and Aloe Way and Bellevue. As part of that, we actually have three different modes of transportation. One is the traditional city bus, and as you can see by the three vehicles that I have here, one's the traditional city bus, the one in the middle is the one we mainly use for paratransit, and then the third one is our new mode that we launched about five years ago, which is our microtransit, which we call GBM On Demand. So, thank you, Kim. So, you know, back when we, as we went through COVID and we made a lot of changes, as you all know, I'm sure you know that, we made changes to the bus out here in Deep Pier. So there is not actually a fixed route bus out in the city of Deep Pier anymore. We did, we utilize our GBM On Demand microtransit service. We launched this, we kind of went down this avenue, it started later in 2019, as, you know, a little history, but back with, when 2020 hit and we had COVID, we, it really, silver lining gave us the opportunity really to launch some new service with not making things more challenging. I think it was a challenging time for everyone, and so it really gave us the ability to make some changes, and change was a little bit easier at that time because we were all forced to do so many things that we weren't expecting. So with that, we really rolled out this On Demand service, which really operates like a public Uber and Lyft, and we have been doing this since 2020, really expanded it about, we did a pilot for about a year, and then we really launched a lot of it in '21, and then made a lot of, you know, various changes throughout this time. Recently, we just did a really big change, took effect in July of this year, and that really kind of changes how we can maneuver around, especially here in the city of Deep Pier. So, city of Deep Pier is our only municipality that operates solely with micro, and you're probably asking yourself why that is. When we first went and looked at the various, the service, we really started from a clean slate, from a clean map and said, where do we see people use a lot, utilizing it, where's the busy spots, where or not? And we really want to make sure that we're using the right resources in the right spot and not running 40-foot empty buses at times of the day when we don't need to and those things, so. So this is what our service area looks now. It looks a little confusing. The previous map is our traditional map with fixed route and all of those things. You know, if you look back, I think I was here back in, I think, March of '23 was the last time I came in front of you all, and this looks a little bit different from that because, you know, when we first rolled out this microtransit, really what we did is we kind of took a clean map and we said, okay, where do we have the largest number of people? That's really where we want to make sure we're using that bus, because when there's large numbers, we want to be using the buses for that. And then there's a lot of the outline areas and kind of on the outskirts, out of the downtown of the city, that we really see there's a need for transportation, it's just a different need, and not as heavy of numbers. And so what we did is we created different zones, and at that time, we launched four different separate zones, and you could go around from the different zones, and we tweaked things through that time a little bit. Now that we're sitting five years later, and we can see really what's worked and what we'd really like to do, you know, where we could maybe open up some more opportunity, is what kind of led us to this map. We were a little conservative when we first did it, because I think we can all relate that if you just open the floodgates, we can't go backwards, so we really wanted to be a little cautious in not open up too many opportunities, more than what we were providing already with fixed route. We really wanted to keep our service kind of status quo and service exactly what we were doing with the ability to expand as time went on, because as we all know, we have that great thing called a budget that we have to stay within, so. So this new zone, and you probably saw a lot of the media on this back when we rolled this out in July, really what we did is we scrapped the four-zone idea now, and we're really working with two zones. And now, because we can kind of see, we have a little bit more analytical data in our pocket to really show us what's working, you know, how people are traveling. And so what we really did, we split this into two different zones. So we have our daytime zone, which is the blue zone, that really covers where we service out here, in addition to our all-zone, which is the green zone. Those, that blue zone that you see on this map right now, that used to be split up into four different zones, and you, and we really limited where you went, because we want people, if you're coming down into the core, you know, say downtown Green Bay, we want you to get onto a bus and, you know, utilize the bus where the heavier transportation is. We eliminated those zones, and now we allow you to go from anywhere in those blue zones that you need to go without having to transfer to a bus at all. We really limited that before, again, because we just didn't want to get too high of a demand more than what we had the ability or the resources for. So now, individuals truly can bounce anywhere in those blue zones without having to use a bus at all. So as an example, if somebody is out here in Deep Pier and they need to go to NWTC, they can book and use the On Demand and never have to actually get on, you know, an official city bus, so they can just use that service. And one of the great advantages, it's really been the goal of the Transit Commission, to keep these fares reasonable for everyone, so this is the same fare as it would be for a city bus. So if you buy an adult bus pass for $41 for 30 days, you can use that on the bus or on our On Demand service. One of the great things for this type of service is it allows us, if we don't have anybody, you know, an example is I picked the I-43 Industrial Park a lot of times in the city of Green Bay, you know, we have people that work night shift in various locations. They can use the service if they need it, if they don't, we just don't send a vehicle, right? And so it really gives us the ability to provide later our service. In my time, I've been at Transit, I don't know, maybe 20-plus years or so now, so, and we used to operate till 10:45 at night. Because of various things, they, things changed, and service got reduced and different things since we're so heavily federally funded, and so, and through COVID and all of those things, we were really only operating until about 7:45, 8:45 at night. This really gives us the ability to run our On Demand service until 11:30 Monday through Friday. So if you're a third-shift employee having to go to work somewhere, this really works out great for you, where before you'd have to go to work two hours early, and I know we all love work, but probably not that much. And so, so that, this has really worked out great to fill those gaps. We really wanted the On Demand service to really complement the bus, not replace it. We want to use the bus where there's those large numbers, so. So that's kind of how this works now, so you can really move around. What happens after our normal hours of the city bus, so we operate the city bus from 5:15 in the morning until 6:45 Monday through Friday, and then on Saturdays, we operate it from 7:45 in the morning until 1:45. At that time, if you're in that green area, that's really where ridership is very high, so that's why we have the buses using that. And then you see our A, B, and C, those are our transfer points, so you could transfer to a bus. A bus hits each one of those transfer points every 30 minutes. So if you really, you know, if you want to get to downtown Green Bay, we're going to have you hop a bus in one of those zones to get to downtown. Outside of the bus area, because from 6:45 at night until 11:30, and then on Saturdays, from 1:45 to 7:45, this whole thing becomes all-zone. So you can take On Demand anywhere you want in the entire service area when the bus is not running. So it really has, you know, it, this has done great for us, it has really worked out well. Little challenging at first to get people to understand, and that's really why we've made these tweaks in the last couple of months, just because as we get more, you know, data and we can see what's working and where people are making those trips, we really want to make it as easy for individuals and make sure they have as many transportation options that they need. And so, and this is really helps a lot for individuals that utilize paratransit. So paratransit is a program for us that is federally regulated, it is disability-based only, and that is something that is probably one of the largest single-line item, you know, on our budget. It's a very expensive service to provide, however, it is, like I said, it's federally regulated, and so, you know, individuals that are unable to access the bus, we need to provide that service for them, there, it is an application-based service. Well, we have found that individuals that maybe before couldn't use the bus are capable of utilizing microtransit. So in the bigger scheme of things, it really provides a more independent trip for the rider if they're able to do those. It provides them a little bit cheaper trip, because a one-way paratransit trip currently for us is about $38 one way, off our budget, and the rider only pays $4. And again, that's federally regulated, we can't charge more than that. And so what happens is if people can utilize microtransit, before they might not have been able to, you know, maybe, you know, walk six, seven, eight blocks, or whatever it may be to get on that bus, but with microtransit, it really pings you to your corner, to your closest corner. So now, you know, maybe you are able to walk a block or even a half a block, so people will utilize microtransit. That makes a big difference. If you're an individual that, you know, is going to work and you're not able to access the bus due to disability, it would cost you $8 each day if you had to go back and forth to work. This way, you can buy elderly reduced fare pass from us, which is actually $31 a month, and you can utilize this. So it's, it is more, you know, cost-effective for the rider, but it's really cost-effective for us as a whole to provide that service and really allows us the ability to shuffle the dollars around, as we all know, there's never enough of those, it's kind of the same amount that we just keep shuffling, so it's really thinking outside of the box and coming up with other ideas to give people some great transportation options. So you're probably wondering why there's little dots in different areas, those are because we really kind of tried to really just copy the service that we were providing before and not really expand it too much to kind of stay within budget range. We have slowly increased and made some of those bubbles larger, you know, as an example, Mayor Boyd could call me and say, Patty, we really want to be able to cover this whole area. We can do that, we just need to be able to meet those, that need and those resources, and obviously, if we have more rides, I need more vehicles and those types of things, and so that's why we're very cautious how we do that. So it's not that we can't, but I mean, we definitely can, and this type of system really allows us the ability to expand services so much easier. So if you have, you know, a new business or a new area we need to cover, we can do that much easier than, you know, someone calling me and I say, well, sorry, I can't just extend a fixed route, right? Because those all link together in timing and all of those things, so. So this has worked out really great for us. Thank you. Just a little bit, I kind of just mentioned, I talked through this already, but I had put this on there, just to let those know, individuals know, and you can have this for later, of course, just on where you can book and how you can book and the times for that, and all the different options. So you don't need a pass anymore, you can do it on your phone, you can do all sorts of things, so. This just gives you an example of where you can actually go, so when people say, I really can't go anywhere on microtransit and all these things, this is, I mean, there are tons of trips you can make with microtransit, and I will tell you, I think, I think when I was here back in '23, I think I reported out to you, we might have been right around about a 15-minute response time, between 12 and 15 minutes, when you book your ride. We are probably close to about a 25-minute response time, and that is because we are up to about 6,500 trips a month on this service. So it's great, the disadvantage of, you're not getting picked up in, you know, 15 minutes anymore, we are at about 25 minutes. That is something that we are watching very closely, we don't want it to get longer than what a bus trip may be, and so if it does, that's where we have to look at and say, okay, do we need to put some additional resources out there, so. All right, this is just a little bit of funding, kind of where, how transit sits, for those that may not have seen this before, this is our 2025 budget, so we are about 9.6 million. As you can see, about 5.5 million is what we get between federal and state dollars. Fares and other really comes from, you know, fares, of course, and then partnerships that we have with the Green Bay Packers is probably the big bulk of the others, so. And advertise, we have some different advertising revenue that comes off, that offsets that local share. That 2 point, about 2.6 million dollars, that is the portion that the, is shared amongst all the municipalities that participate in transit. So that is, of course, the city of Green Bay, city of Deep Pier, and then Ashwaban and Aloe Way and Bellevue. So of that 2.6 million, about 1.1, or I'm sorry, about 2.1 of that is the city of Green Bay, just to give you a rough idea of where all the dollars come from. All right, this is just a little bit of, you know, really specifically for Deep Pier, because I know that's what matters the most to you all. Civil Hop is, you know, a frequent user of our service, I'm sure you are all aware of that. They get a lot of direct trips being where they're at, because they're all microtransit now versus a lot of the hopping around on buses that they used to have to do. One of our busier locations out here is that Walmart area, of course, and then, you know, a lot of the social and medical trips that we provide. This is the data on the bottom here for just the first six months of this year where we're at. So for individuals that are coming to Deep Pier from non-Deep Pier rides, meaning they're not starting here, is about 2,300. And then the non-Deep Pier community, so outside individuals coming to Deep Pier, or I'm sorry, non-community from Deep Pier is about 3,600. That's up quite a bit from last year's numbers. And then Deep Pier to Deep Pier, so this is people that their trip is originating here and they're coming back to here, and that's about 1,200. So that kind of gives you a rough idea. We did, with this change that we just implemented in July, they're behind the scenes, there's a whole new platform, so we really can drill down on where a lot of these trips are coming from, so we'll be able to give a little bit better data going forward with that new technology, And then I did bring some information that I shared with Kim that I will leave here. We do have a full-time travel trainer that works with us, so if you know anybody that needs to learn how to use the bus or learn how to use our On Demand service, her name is Andrea, she is great, she goes out to all different employers, meets with HR individuals, so they know how to help their employees, she goes to all sorts of different agencies and nursing homes and all sorts of things, so there is information here for her, she is happy to help anybody, so share that information. I mean, she will go out and meet individuals out in service and do their trip with them, because sometimes people are a little afraid if they haven't used it the first time, that's what she is there for, and then, of course, our website and phone number if anybody has questions. So with that, and there's, you know, some QR codes, all sorts of different information that individuals can use and show you how to download that, so. All right, just real quick, the other thing I would like to just add is, we are, as I had shared, we get a lot of our funding through the federal and state government, so we go through some pretty strict reviews on a regular basis, and so this, we just concluded our review this year, so I wanted to definitely share this, I'm super proud of the team that we have. I think, you know, Green Bay Metro does a phenomenal job, and I'm not saying that because I'm the director in any means, but this On Demand service is great. We were the first ones in the state of Wisconsin to roll this out. Milwaukee is now already doing a pilot, Eau Claire is launching this, and then two other systems are already in review of this, so. So it's great, it really is a neat way, especially, you know, as we're all forced to do more with a little bit less, so. So I'm super excited to share that, so. All right, and that's my contact info, happy to answer any questions, I tried to talk as fast as I could, but I'm just happy to be here to share this all with you.
No, that's great, it's very informative. I love how you're evolving from 2020 to now, and you're always willing to change the Green Bay Metro system and listen to residents. I have not heard a lot negative at all about this, I've heard nothing but positive, and nothing at all, which is probably a good thing as well, too.
That is what I like.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you do. I just have one question, so we talked about federal funding, obviously different challenges that we're seeing right now. Are you seeing anything right now that would give you heartburn over the next?
Well, a little bit, but, you know, I think that, you know, this year, we were expecting to be kind of status quo. Funding for transit is very, very unique. When we do a budget, you know, Scott's already reached out to me looking for numbers, so, you know, we do our budget and follow the same as everybody else does, and we do that, we budget off of our best guess from a federal and state perspective. I will not find out what I'm getting for federal and state for 2026 until probably May. Sometimes I've gotten it as late as August. Well, you know, then you're five, six, seven months into the year, and what do we do, right? And so that's why it's not uncommon to see some changes by us a little bit. So usually the second half of the year, you know, last quarter of the year is probably where I get maybe a little bit grayer, because that's when we're kind of tight, and we are not allowed to carry anything over. So at the end of every year, after the first of the year, actually, we go through an audit, and any, if I come in under budget, everything that is remaining goes back to each municipality and to the state and feds in the same percentage that we received it. So we are not allowed to carry anything over, so I have to end in zero every year. And so paratransit and fuel are my two biggest heartburns, that I cannot control those numbers. And so it's challenging, but I love it, that's why I've been there as long as I have, but, you know, I think that this year, we ended up with about a $207,000 reduction in federal dollars that we were not anticipating. We'll be fine for this year, we'll make it through, and I figured out some solutions for that. Next year, we've been fortunate to have some bill money the last few years that have really got us through. We do expect some pretty big changes next year. I think that at this point, we still do have a little bit of federal funding from CARES dollars that we held on to, to use for when bill expired, just so we didn't have kind of too much of the heartburn, so we'll see how all that comes together, but it is definitely a unique time, so.
Yeah, and it's something that residents, many residents benefit from and utilize, so it's something I really think we have to fight for and try to maintain. Really appreciate it. Other questions that people might have for Patty while she's here? Alder Person Gantz.
I just want to say thank you, because you do a great job. I have a lot of residents and clients who do take Green Bay Metro, and it's a great experience, so thank you. And Andrea's great, I've had her out before. And just one question, Sundays, any chance you'll be providing transportation on Sundays?
You know, I think I have been asked that question probably, probably at least 15 years of my career, and, you know, at one time, I would say, never in my lifetime while I'm there, just because of the cost to operate it. With the On Demand service, I would tell you that I know that as we are preparing, going through strategic planning and things like that, that is something that I would think that the commission is, I know they're very interested in being, being able to offer that and have that service. I think it's very realistic for us, I think it comes down to the funding piece and where things are at. I think we're, you know, the next couple of years are probably going to be a little bit of a challenge, we're doing our best to prepare for that, and which is why we kind of held a little bit of some of those extra dollars we got to help get us through, but that is something that I think is, is pretty realistic for us now.
Great, thank you. I know a lot of people ask me, and they say, what should I do, so.
Yes, and I, and, yeah, and I agree, I mean, I think that is the one thing, you know, at one time, I would have never said we could have operated until 11:30 at night, and I think that is great, and it's just, this type of service, and it's great, I mean, if you can, if you're capable of using a smartphone, you can use your smartphone, and you can see where your vehicle is, you can book it, you get your arrival time, all of those things, it's just great. And if you're not, you can always call and do it by phone as well, so. Those types of, I mean, obviously, and it's a more cost-effective way for us to provide transit, so that's why I think, you know, it's definitely something that I hope we can do on Sundays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so people realize, if folks have questions for me of Green Bay Transit, I just send it Patty's way, and she's very responsive and, you know, has the answers, may not have all the answers and something they like, but at least she's very responsive, so appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I think we'll also talk to, I'll talk to Kim and our communications team, we should probably do a little PR-ish type information, re-information campaign for Green Bay Metro, because it really is utilized, so we'll do something like that.
All right, great.
Alder Person Carpenter.
So you said that On Demand is like a 25-minute wait now?
Correct.
So, I never used a transit, but, so when you go from bus to bus stop, it's every 30 minutes, so where's your, have you decided a breaking point that you're gonna, is it going to be the 30-minute, when it starts getting over that, that you're going to try to have to make some changes of some type, or you don't have a number yet, or thought in your head? I'm not trying to get information that you don't want to put out there, but.
No, 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 I'm an open book, all the way. And so, you know, I will tell you that I think our goal is really to make it, we don't want to make it too premier of a service, because then we end up with a lot of other concerns. So we really want it to make sure that it is, that people that are utilizing that service are not waiting any longer than you would on a bus or whatever. So our goal is really to watch that 30-minute. I will tell you, when we switch from, the fixed route ends at 6:45, so the bus really is in at about 6:40, from 6:40 to 7 o'clock, I mean, you will get no seat available if you're, it is that busy. We will have 10 vehicles on the road at that time, and they are six-passenger vehicles. And so it's, it's super crazy, and I will tell you that the riders have really adapted and learned and use it to their advantage, which I would tell you is kudos to them, I mean, we provide transportation to people to, you know, various grocery stores and shopping centers, and they will take the bus to those shopping centers, maybe at 5:30, do their shopping, and at 6:45, guess where they're booking their ride with On Demand? With all their bags, and they get dropped off at the corner. That is awesome, and that is really what we want to do, is to provide a good transportation option. So though, you know, sometimes those, that time when we switch the service, we see that being really busy at that time, but then it catches up, usually within about a half-hour, 45 minutes. So we are really focusing with that 30 minutes. We are planning to add some additional service hours behind the scenes for our folks, so if we need to get an extra driver out there or something with our contractor, that we can do that, we are planning for that coming forward. We were prepared for that with this change, we figured we would see a jump in service with people being able to move from zone to zone now, so 30 minutes is our goal, it truly is, and I think that we've been able to control that, and I mean, the issue, we don't want to get too crazy with it, right, because we pay for those service hours, so.
So how many On Demand buses do you have? And it is a great service, because as you showed Deep Pier, I can jump in Deep Pier and go clear out East Town.
You can.
You know what I mean, and there's not a bus transferring, I mean, so it is a very nice service, and so I was just curious, how many On Demand buses, the smaller ones, do you have?
We have 12.
12, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Alder Person Hanson.
Yeah, Patty, a couple years ago, I asked about the bus signs that are still in Deep Pier, and it turns out that it was a limited service route, Route 78, for students going to Notre Dame.
Correct.
Is that still active?
That is still active.
And how many people typically take that, do you know?
So that, off of the top, I want to guess, it is, ranges probably between 25 and 40 is what that number is. So it operates once in the morning and once in the afternoon on regularly scheduled school days.
Okay.
So that is, that is a That is still active.
And how many people typically take that? Do you know?
So that, off of the top, I want to guess it is, ranges probably between 25 and 40 is what that number is. So it operates once in the morning and once in the afternoon on regularly scheduled school days. So that is, that is a busy route.
Great. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Once again, Patty, thanks for coming in and thanks for sharing this.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, it's good that we all hear this and get the updates. So.
Yes, anytime. Do not hesitate if you have any questions. Send them Andrea's way. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We should actually drive it sometime. We should go out there.
We should.
Good job, Kim.
Yeah.
Good maulson.
The timing was impeccable.
I'll talk to Kim about that after. I was just saying, we should drive it sometime.
That'd be great to take it to the airport.
We'll talk to Patty another time. Most of us have never done it.
$4.
All right. Item six, yeah, it's incredible. Resolution 2583, approving home improvement loan and authorizing dispersment to Susan A. Turney Brozick, 618 North Clay Street, parcel ED 1128 L22.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder Person P Rock, second by Elder Person Gantz. Discussion or comments? Seems we have no, seems we have none. What? He is, but if he doesn't want to talk, I'm sure he's happy. Roll call vote, please.
Elder Person Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Coniger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Mayor Boyd?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, resolution 2584, approving facade improvement project and authorizing dispersment of grant at 301 Main Avenue, parcel WD 906.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion by Elder Person Hanson, second by Elder Person Gantz. Discussion or comments? Elder Person Hanson?
Question for staff.
Dan is out there. Dan, can you hear us?
I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, Dan, in the memo, Peter, because this is, you know, a historic building, he has some recommended traditional facade components. So basically just suggestions for improvements that also maintain the historical character of the building. Do we know if the property owner has been receptive to those ideas?
In this case, the property owner has been typically receptive, very similar to what other property owners have done in the downtown. So if you remember the former Martin Photography Studio, that was also done by the same developer slash building owner. And that one, again, re-establishing the large storefront windows, some of the old ones, re-establishing and doing tuck pointing and doing a variety of other elements. Typically, this, this project has done that. We don't go to that level of detail when we get to this component. This program only requires you to submit quotes for the type of work that you are doing. And the RDA at that point had recommended approval.
Okay. And I think based on the individual that's doing this and the looks at his building and what he's doing right now, I'd say a big yes to try to, you know, maintain that. The alleyway he has right now between the two structures is very impressive. Other questions or comments? All right. We have none. I believe this is also roll call vote. Roll call vote, please.
Elder Person Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Coniger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Mayor Boyd?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, resolution 2585, approving facade improvement project and authorizing dispersment of grant 305 Main Avenue, WD 907.
Make motion approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder Person Carpenter, second by Elder Person Gantz. Discussion or comments? All right. We have none. Roll call vote, please.
Elder Person Gantz?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Coniger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Mayor Boyd?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, resolution 2586, authorizing temporary limited easement to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, parcel ED 287.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person P Rock, seconded by Elder Person Hanson. Discussion or comments? All right. We have, we have none. Roll call vote, please.
Elder Person Hanson?
Aye.
Coniger?
Aye.
Ledvina?
Aye.
P Rock?
Aye.
Mayor Boyd?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gantz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Reappointments to the following boards and commissions by Mayor Boyd. Someone else should approve or make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder Person Coniger, seconded by Elder Person Ledvina. Before we approve it, I'm going to state the names of these folks because they volunteer their time to serve on the boards, commissions, and committees and give up their evenings and whatever it is. So I'm going to say their names. And then I also want to make a plea to residents out there as well. If you're ever interested in serving on any of these committees, commissions, and boards, please contact the mayor's office or contact your older persons and we'll try to, try to set you up with something. So appointments, Board of Appeals, we have former Mayor Bob DeGroot, one of only two non-consecutive mayors in the history of the city of Deep Pier, Bob DeGroot, Michelle Mankey and Andy Vanremordo, Board of Appeals, Scott Bonfite, Mike LeBovier, Brown County Supervisor, and Krista Seidel to the Board of Appeals. Board of Health, Teresa Gullis. Board of Park Commissioners, former Alder Person Jim Canizel, and Randy Soke. Commission on Aging, Rayanne Dolan, Teresa Ryder, and Larry Vandeheij. Also reappointing to Green Bay Area Room Tax Commission, Pam Manley. To the Housing Authority, Patty Gulkey. Plan Commission, Grant Schilling, Brenda Bush, Mark Higgins, and Shane Raymaker. Police and Fire Commission, Erin Bonders. And Redevelopment Authority, Julie Van Stratten. Again, thanks to all those for agreeing to continue to serve the city of Deep Pier moving forward. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, future agenda items. Does anyone have anything? Elder Person Hanson?
Just like to request an update on the timeline for installing the new neighborhood watch signs and removing the old ones at defunct neighborhoods.
There's still some out there, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. All good? Thank you. Other questions? I'm sorry, other future dent items? All good? All right. Up next, I will make a motion to adjourn. Motion by me, seconded by Elder Person Coniger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Officially adjourned. Mics are muted.